It's a blocker, exactly. I'm used to people not seeing me, so. This one we got today. This one, like, is actually warm, so it's brushed off the printer, I can tell.
Yeah, but the same thing you got. What's that?
No leather.
Yeah.
Awesome. Awesome. It would've been nice if someone wore it, too.
So the pictures I've seen in Iceland, hearts that look like things around here.
Oh, yeah.
With the sulfur and...
Iceland is where the American and Europe were iconic places.
Okay.
But, okay, in many places, tech companies are pushing up against each other. Like, in California, they slide against each other, so you have the faults in your...
Yeah.
Here, they're separating. They're moving parts.
Okay.
So there's this park where there's this huge crack in the earth, where basically it separates about two centimeters every year.
Ah.
Basically, as the separation, you have kind of lava that comes up and floats out. So it's all the... Volcanic rock, volcanic rock.
Yeah.
And it's, yeah, it's like, there's geysers, and there's hot, cool...
Hot pots.
Well, I mean, so they get a lot of energy from geothermal heat. So, I mean, there are all these ancient pools, like, this is where people wash their clothes in these light...
Yeah, it's like...
And there was this, what they call a lagoon, which is basically where they dug out this pool 100 years ago, that there was, they had the mineral baths, and, you know, the hot water flowing in from the...
And tonight is October 25th, 2021, 7:00 PM, here in the council chambers, Waverly City Hall. Officially called the meeting of the city council study session to order. Ask Carla to conduct the roll call, please.
O'For?
Here.
Bergen?
Here I am.
Drinkhouse?
Here.
Kingus?
Present.
Myers?
Yes.
Rafi?
Here.
Schneider?
Here.
Thank you very much, and I'll welcome back Mr. Connor Moore.
How are you?
I'm doing great. Hopefully, you're doing the same.
I'm good.
Good?
Yeah.
Any, I know you just sat down, so nothing like putting you on the spot, literally. Any comments coming back to this, Manny, or anything?
No, not really, just, uh, Warburg just had a good break, so we're getting back to it, and I'm excited to be back, so.
Good deal.
Yeah.
Thank you for being here again.
Yeah.
We'll recite the Pledge of Allegiance. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you. We'll move into item D, the approval of the agenda. Entertain the motion to do so.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second?
Motion by Schneider, second by Bergen. Council discussion, if any? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Moving into item E, is the presentation of a plaque of appreciation to Ms. Deb Schroeder, who served her time with the Economic Development Commission. I'll meet you up front there. Pretty straightforward, just showing our appreciation, sorry about that, for your participation on the commission as served. So, thank you very much for your, your time.
Yes.
And I'll give you the podium for just a moment. Get your picture here. There you go.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Well, I thank all of you. It was a real privilege to serve all of those years, and I think we made some great progress over the years, and it was fun to just, you know, set new goals and, and work towards them. So it was great working with Bill and Connie, and the entire staff were just awesome, plus a talented group of businesspeople at the table, and so it was great. So, thank you very much for the opportunity to serve.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Any comments from the council while Deb's still in the room?
No, just appreciate her, I was on the Bartles Board for several years, and appreciate her guidance, bringing Bartles into the future in many ways, and, and poising them for further development. So, thank you for everything you did for long-term Karen Waverly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? All right, thank you. We'll try. All right, moving forward to item F, is public comments. For items not on the agenda, please limit your comments to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any individual member. Any public comments out there this evening? If so, step forward. Seeing nobody rise to the occasion, literally, we will move on to section G, the study session calendar. First up, number one is the Waverly Chamber of Commerce update. Mr. Tolliver and Mr. Meyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council, for the opportunity, opportunity to give you our quarterly update from the Chamber Main Street program. Travis is handing out some handouts for you, a copy of our dashboard, and some of our reports here to help bring you up to date on what we've been doing. So, I just want to say again to the city that we are grateful for the partnership that we have, and one of the things most recently that we've been working with the city on is our wayfinding project. We have three, or maybe it's four, members of our chamber board who are part of that steering committee, and it's been an exciting project to work on. I think it's going to be great for our community, and we look forward to our continued work there. We were grateful that our consultant was able to provide a pop-up booth at Oktoberfest so that they could get some community input, and so, again, we are excited about moving that project forward. One of the things that we're working on, too, as we look ahead, is that we are starting to plan for how we will keep the downtown active and activated during the construction of the Bremer Avenue Bridge. So this next year, we'll be putting a lot of plans into place for helping to do that, which can involve a variety of things. We've talked about block parties, you know, inviting community to different events downtown. And also, we've set aside and earmarked some funds to, to provide and fund some special activities downtown. So, we try to keep looking ahead that way, too. Travis and I are scheduling meetings with our top supporters, our top members, this, this week and, and next week, to make visits with them, so that we stay in touch with them and offer, you know, our support for any help that they might need from the chamber as well. And then finally, just to highlight that we are, we are really excited about the several ribbon-cutting ceremonies we've had lately this summer and fall for new businesses opening in our community. So we continue to work to keep doing that, to have more of those, and look forward to that as we look ahead. I will then turn it over to Travis for a walk through the dashboard that you have there.
Thank you, Don. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Appreciate your time this evening. As Don said, we've made a lot of progress this year, and I'm sorry to say that we haven't met with each other since the end of first quarter, but we're going to kind of cover quarters two and three in this update. And as, out of respect for your time, with regards to the dashboard, we're going to be looking at the first page and the last page. I would certainly invite questions for anything on the dashboard or anything in between, but just want to go through quickly some of the statistics for you with regards to the Chamber and Main Street program. So at the very top, we're a volunteer-driven organization, right? So, we have 81 volunteers who's donated, up to this date, 748 hours totaling a value of $20,358. So we really appreciate all the work that all of our volunteers do, our boards and our committees, and throughout the, the calendar year with all of our events. We are sitting right now at about, is that 18, 19, 20, 20-plus new businesses? So, really happy about that. We've got a strong retention rate of businesses, and we have several, several visits to different businesses throughout the year. You see that we're on track to be meeting our goal there of meeting 100-plus businesses, and certainly would invite all of you, and certainly the mayor, too, to, to keep joining me on doing some of those business visits. Really great to see both city leadership and, and chamber leadership walking the street. Our Chamber Main Street organization had five active goals this year, the first wayfinding, which Don covered, and so we're moving forward on that with help from city staff and the MSA folks that has been hired for, for this consulting project. And we got several people that stopped in at the tent at Oktoberfest to kind of review some of the ideas and the thoughts around wayfinding and get some public input, so that was very, very helpful, not only for the steering committee but for the people working on the signage project. Our downtown design guidelines are being worked on right now. In fact, our tourism and events director Tiffany was working on those today and just trying to finalize up the compiled information and putting them into a document, and then that document will go on to the, the committee for, for final approval. And again, these are guidelines, these are not standards. We're just trying to be a resource and, and help building owners in downtown understand what could be possible with their historic building and the fronts and the backs and the insides and all that fun stuff. We've done a lot of research on that, so really excited to, to put that document together. Once we have that document approved by that committee, I'll be happy to, to share that with you. We hired a photographer and videographer this year to cover a lot of our events, to give us some footage and some images of the things that are going on in Waverly, and so we've been compiling a, a great image library and, and footage library for throughout the year. So we've still got some more events coming up that still need to be covered with that, but we're really excited about how that's turning out. And of course, we're sharing a lot of those images with our friends who are at the city and Economic Development for use with the Waverly Welcome Home campaign. New social media platforms, so we've been incorporating LinkedIn, YouTube, and Instagram and on top of the Facebook, that account that we've already been maintaining for quite a long time, and so we're glad to be reaching folks on those platforms and, and reaching new demographics there. And then finally, like Don said, the bridge closure event was, you know, even though this was scheduled originally for Fall '22, now that it's been pushed back, we still are actively working with our, our retail promotions committee and, and different businesses throughout the downtown to talk about what could be possible during that time. And like Don said, we've earmarked some funds to help with offsetting costs for, like, different events, marketing, signage that could help lead people to downtown, and encouraging folks to take the scenic route to downtown during that, that bridge closure. We flip to the back page and looking at the tourism committee goals and statistics there. This is what some of your money goes towards, so I want to definitely cover these. You know, over 5,000 welcome packets, almost 15,000 visitors guides and brochures, and six bus tour groups have all gone out and visited Waverly so far this year. You'll see there that in green, we have a lot of print advertising that's gone out and the several different publications that we have. We're still working on the Iowa Magazine and the Iowan magazines, but so far, we're on track to be meeting that goal. The co-op advertising that we do with KWA, Iowa Public Radio, and Travel Iowa have all been completed, and ICANN and KWWL are still in the works. Our Visitors Information Center, we do have on the outside a new brochure rack that gives folks opportunity to have information about Waverly even when we're not there. So if you go and check that out, it's in the front of our building, and you have access to the Waverly and Bremer County Visitors Guide, our membership directory, a map of Bremer County and Waverly, and a map of the Prairie Trail system. So, the four most popular things that we hand out on a daily basis in our office, so you can find those outside of our building as well. And then finally, Santa's House, that's obviously going to be happening fairly soon, but we'll get that moved probably in sometime in November, maintenance and get some improvements done when it's in the park, and then get it cleaned up and decorated for the holidays. After that, you should have a year-to-date events and tourism update. Just want to quickly go over this with you. Waverly retailers enjoyed several events that the Chamber put on, Chamber Main Street put on throughout the year to help spur their business. It's included Ladies Night Out, Spring Retail Open House, Ridiculous Days, and Fall Fest. Coming up very quickly is Holiday Open House on November 13th, Shop Small Saturday on November 27th, and Christmas Greetings on Main on December 9th. We normally don't think of Christmas Greetings on Main as a retail event, but in recent years, we have seen retailers see a lot of transactions that night, so why not include it? So we are excited about that. We continue planning and implementing a lot of in-person events throughout the year, things that bring several folks around the area to our community, including Art Walk, Concerts in Coleman, Jack-o'-lantern night coming up this Thursday night from 6:00 to 7:30, definitely want to mention that. Santa's visits starting on December 4th, and then of course, again, Christmas greetings on Main on December 9th. On the tourism side, we continue to market Waverly as a destination throughout the Cedar Valley and the area through the multiple medias that we talked about on the dashboard. We've completed the 2223 Visitors Guide with our partners who are with the Waverly newspaper that is currently in print right now, so we should have those publications out soon. And then, and, and this piece, too, and I usually bring it to you at, at budget time, but it's a great showcase piece for not only Waverly but Bremer County. We talk a lot about where to go to dine, to shop, to experience recreation, and then we also do include information with regards to all the other communities in the county. So it is a, is a full picture of Waverly and the surrounding area. Like I said before, we hired a photographer, videographer to capture images and footage for this year. We also hosted an Oh Snap photo contest to garner more images of things going on in Waverly from the community, so it's another way we interact with our community, and we're able to use those images in different showcase pieces that we do throughout the year. And then finally, the brochure rack that I talked about outside, giving folks information to tourism information 24/7 when we're not there. Any questions that I can answer for you? I will say, too, as a side note, and I would like to open the invitation up to any of you, I'm really excited this Friday to be going and visiting the Waterloo Career Center. Ms. O'For and I have talked quite a bit about her experiences there, and I'm very interested to see how we can tackle some of the workforce questions that we have in our community with regards to young people coming out of high school and preparing them for the workforce. Some students aren't prone to going to a four-year institution, so if they're passionate about something that we can get them into the workforce for, how are we setting them up for success? How are we getting them, getting them with an apprenticeship or an internship or getting certified in something? So I'm looking forward to, to meeting with Jeff and, and seeing more about that, and so I would invite all of you, if you want to come with me, Friday at 10 o'clock, I'll be at the Waterloo Career Center. I've also invited our friends from the WSR schools, and I'll be inviting our board tomorrow afternoon in, in our meeting. Any, any comments, any questions?
Well, I'm pleased to see, it looks like you got the 24 new business members.
Yeah.
So I think that's one of the things that we really wanted to see coming from the Chamber of Commerce was kind of more new businesses growing, becoming a part of that.
Yeah.
I mean, one of the big concerns is, you know, this feeling that the Chamber of Commerce might feel like an old boys' network, or you're kind of all, already part of the club, so it really makes me happy to see that outreach going on and getting new people involved.
Yeah.
So, really happy about seeing that.
Thank you, yeah. And certainly, again, we piggyback with, with Bill and Connie on businesses coming in. We do community tours together, and we, we really utilize our resources together to make that happen, so that doesn't go without team effort, for sure.
Anything further? Thank you, sir.
Great, thank you so much for your time.
For more visits with the...
Yes, please do.
Business visits, so.
Absolutely. Okay. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thanks, Don. Item two, Golf Commission update. Welcome, Sally.
Well, I'm a little pencil. Good evening.
Good evening.
I believe you have our report in your hands or on your screen there. My name is Sally Thorson, and I serve on the Golf Commission here in Waverly. I am a, I started golfing on our little city gem of a golf course in 1967, so I've golfed there for 54 years, and I'm proud of what we have here in Waverly. The Golf Commission holds their meetings the second Tuesday of the month, usually at noon at the country club, and your commission members, I guess I should be waiting for, are you with me, or?
Fine, I'm not worried yet. I'll catch him.
We're following.
You're following me, okay. Brett Jones is your chairperson, I'm the vice chair, Sally Thorson. Jerry Hankner is here this evening, if you just wave your hand, and Angie Hubbard is on there, and Ron Rushee is here tonight, and Julie Meyer is our city council liaison. We go through the mission statements each year and talk just a little bit about where we're going. Believe in making, obviously, a good life better for providing safe, modern, well-maintained, and aesthetically pleasing environments for the community. The Waverly Golf Course and Country Club commits to provide scenic golf and social experiences, exceptional value, embracing our historical past and our progressive future in the, the greater Cedar Valley. Some of the values that we look at almost each time that we're, we're meeting together have to do with excellence, a welcoming customer service, friendliness, service, and welcoming community. I hear a lot of that because I golf in the tournaments, and I hear very positive comments about our golf course and the pro shop when people from out of town come in, so I'm hearing very positive comments. Teamwork and loyalty, diverse opportunities, and as the years have gone on, here's some very diverse programs, and obviously, of memorable experiences they come to golf here. Our advisory commission, and when we meet, we usually recommend annually to the city council a budget. We work with Dennis on that budget and with Jordan for the operation of the golf course, the pro shop, or other operations relating to the golf in Waverly. We recommend to the city council a long-term capital improvement program for the golf course and the related facilities, including any acquisition of future golf course facilities. We recommend annually to the city council the establishment of the fees and the charges for the golf activities. We recommend to the city council policies for that operation of the functions of the golf course and the pro shop, and oversee the implementations of these policy. We promote the golf course activities for the benefit of all citizens in Waverly, and we, we will recommend to the city council terms and conditions... we will recommend to the City Council terms and conditions of any contracts that are related to golf operations, including but not limited to the pro shop, their operations, and other contracts with private individuals or enterprises conducting business on the golf course. So we have quite a range of things that we deal with and talk about each month, and continuing there, we provide the annual report to the City Council, which I'm trying to do here tonight. We provide some such financial and administrative information and reports on golf operations as requested by our city administrator. We coordinate activities with the Waverly Leisure Service Director with Garrett, who shall provide communications to and from the city administration and council, and coordinate activities with the city administration to facilitate efficient use of equipment and personnel with the Leisure Services Department and to ensure utilization of other department capabilities, including finance and public works. Your core staff, obviously, we work with the Leisure Director Garrett and the Leisure Service Office, Jen, and with the course, our lead maintenance specialist, Dennis, who's here with us tonight, and the ground maintenance specialist, Chris Miller, and then the golf pro shop, Jordan, and he is here tonight also, in case you have questions that they can better answer than me. And we have a picture of the three fine gentlemen that will pop up there for you. Jerry Hankner, that I introduced you to, is representing the Golf Commission on the Comprehensive Plan Bike and Pedestrian Trail and Open Space Steering Committee, so Jerry will be serving on that. We've cleaned out a dry run along the 12th Fairway, and if you don't happen to be a golfer, the 12th Fairway would basically be, if you went into the John Deere implement and walked straight west through it, that's where the 12th Fairway is in the dry run. And it's very low, and it gets fed a lot of water from all the concrete south of it, and then it ends up on hole one and two eventually for there. But they, Chris was really, all the steering men of the games that the kids play, when he cleaned out that area, that's a horrible area to have to maintain because it just grows profusely. They hauled dirt and seeded an area worn by car traffic near 13 green and 14 tee-off. That's way at the west, northwest corner of the southern part of the golf course, near those, the pond, but right on the west line. That was cleaned up and worked on and worn because of cart. And then you have a safety fence, and that, we lost a couple trees there, and some of your better golfers then that can hit a long, long way like to cut across that part of the golf course, and going over that way in a cut is a tee-off and then a green. So this was put up as a means of some safety, till we can hopefully get some more trees in there and get those growing, which, you know, don't happen, actually doesn't happen overnight. Some of the golf course accomplishments, we've had a great couple of years, even though we've been dealing with pandemic. They installed that safety fence, they removed barbed wire fencing that was along the cart path behind 14 green, which would be the border of the very southern end of the golf course into the industrial, the older industrial park there. There was a big old barbed wire fence there, right on the cart path and all, so they removed that. And they replaced the north half of the roof on the turf center, which was a good deal because it was obviously very, very old. They cut down, sad to say, this summer and spring, 19 ash, two Scotch pine, one maple, one cedar, and one Austrian pine. There's a picture of the turf center, which you can't see very well, but it does have the new roof on it. Our pro shop in July of 2020, now you got to think, the budget goes from July to July, and the golf season is probably April through October, so we're kind of overlapping a couple different budget areas here. But in July of 2020, we hosted the 87th Annual Waverly Invitational with 137 players participated in that two-day tournament, and this is the longest-running invitational tournament in the state of Iowa. And if you're ever up there to see that, you have people that have golfed in it for probably 20, 30, 40, 50 years, they come, maybe they golfed here when they were at Warburg, maybe they golfed at Waverly Shell Rock, or they just plain lived here for a while and golfed, but they come from Texas, from California, I mean, they're from several states that come back for that weekend to visit and to golf, so that's a very special event. July, last July 2020, the single highest month of merchandise sale in the course history with $18,000 in sales at the pro shop. He also sold 98 fall passes. He not only has a season pass, but he has just a fall pass, and that began in September of 2020, more than tripling our previous record of 31 passes in 2013. Jordan did another kind of unique thing when we were hit with the pandemic, and you didn't have people riding like two people in a golf cart. You were one individual, so you weren't right arm-arm next to people. He hired some young attendants that would come in, and they sanitized the carts after every use, and then sanitized them at night when no one was using them. So those were kept, and your people that rode in them were very appreciative, and that may have a little bit to do with how well the rentals and the carts were used this year. You have a picture of that 87th Annual Tournament there. Also under the pro accomplishments, December 9th and 10th, a year ago, the weather allowed us to open the golf course, and 74 golfers played on those two days. At the end of the 2020 calendar year, the Waverly Golf Course had produced 24,310 rounds, which is the fourth-highest total on record, and the most since 2012. This total includes records in nine holes, 18 holes, and junior and senior, senior passes, or season passes, excuse me. The Waverly Golf Course continued to host the Waverly Shell Rock Golf Teams, including the Boys Conference, Boys District, and Girls Regional Golf Meets in May of 2021. You have a picture of some of the youth that Jordan works with, and it's fun to watch the little guys try to swing a club that's probably as tall as they are, but they can really hit them. And this year, I hope you were aware that Waverly Shell Rock, we actually had 54 high school golfers, both boys and, that was a combination, boys and girls, 54 team members this year. And in June, a Waverly Shell Rock junior golfer and Waverly Shell Rock member of the golf team, Hogan Hansen, won the individual state championship. And then, this fall, that was in the paper, he was recognized by the PGA as the Iowa Top Junior Golfer. That tells you right there, in a small little nutshell, golf is growing in Waverly. The youth have been coming up, and they are golfing well, and they enjoy this course. In July of 2020, we hosted our first four-day junior golf camp with 29 golfers. In August of 2020, we hosted another junior golf fundraiser, 116 players participated and raised $2,996 for our junior golf programs, and that's for equipment for instructions and things that they use with the junior golfers. The Waverly Golf Course is once again represented in the PGA Junior League. 11 kids make up, made up our team in 2021, competing against area golf courses. I actually followed a grandson to several of those, like to Burns or wherever, and they play against other cities, and the teams come in and play together in the summer and give them a chance for some competitive play. Onto our Restore Tree fundraiser, and the Waverly Golf Course has endured substantial loss of trees in the recent years, stemming from obviously numerous diseases as well as natural causes. Over the winter, we suffered the loss of another 57 trees, continuing a concern trend over the last five years, and that dates back to the 1990s where 63 ash trees stood on the Waverly Golf Course. That number has dwindled to five, all of which are now condemned due to the Emerald Ash Bore infestation. Now additionally, we have, we were once home to over 200 Scotch pines. As you drive up the path to the actual course, that's tree-lined with the Scotch pines, and they are two, there's 23 Scotch pines that remain, and many of those will have to be removed locally. There's a thing called the pine wood neato disease. So who would have known when they planted trees back in the dark ages there, that the ash would go all at once because we had a lot of them, and the same with the pines. Tree loss, this significant causes concerns for our environment, the course aesthetics, and obviously, the course playability, and on-course safety, like the fence we had to put up. So we have going on, if you've been up at the pro shop or seen online, the Restore the Tree fundraiser, and the current fundraising total, I can say now, is 16,000. Did that change in the last day? 16,000. And our goal is over two years, the current ratio of trees removed to trees planted is no longer sustainable for our golf course nor for our community. Thus begins a two-year campaign to replace as many lost trees as possible with a focus on immediate and future needs. A large majority of the trees planted will be mature instead of instant-impact trees that will help fill the significant voids left by the removed trees. And below there, you see the goal is 30,000, so we're over, a little bit over the halfway mark on that in one year, or less than one year. A par giver, a birdie giver, an eagle giver, and a hole-in-one giver, so you can see we've been very fortunate so far. But we need to keep going on that because obviously, a city budget can't handle the replacement of 30 good trees that are high enough and have enough growth on them to serve a good purpose at that point. So that's a real important campaign for us. In September of 2021, this is what Cedar Valley Best of the Best had in the Courier. I hope some of you saw that, some more recognition. And looking to the future, currently, the city of Waverly does not have a public driving range and learning center. Game improvement is a fundamental part of introducing new golfers to the game as well as retraining current golfers. Research is underway to determine the viability of a golf learning center in Memorial Park if such space becomes available, and the Golf Commission is doing lots and lots of research to have very good information before offering any suggestions to that committee. The Commission recognizes the dedication and support of the City Council to the city golfing activities and the facilities the community has available. Commission hopes to continue to improve the quality of life of the citizens of Waverly by providing natural areas and the facilities for golfing and non-golfing citizens of today and the future. Any questions? I have my backup experts here in case I can't answer.
I have one for whoever wants to take it. I'm curious how we're comping on sessions, you know, now we got a full year up against COVID, how much are we down on that, you know, when we get into late summer, comping up year-over-year activity?
Jordan's probably got a good.
It's kind of a two-part question, I think. I'll see how you answer it.
Sure, yeah. So last calendar year, we said we had the fourth-highest attendance that we've ever had, and we actually surpassed our record about a month ago, so we are far and away exceeding anything that we've ever done.
It's holding nice.
Yeah, up 19 and a half percent over last year even, so.
And I think if you said, where I said about the carts individually riding, and how people are comfortable, and you're outside, and you're in the open, and they continue, that's one thing they feel comfortable doing.
I have a second part that I'm going to rework.
Can I just ask a question about that?
Go ahead.
Just wondering, is that new golfers, or is it the same set of golfers golfing more? Or both?
That's a good question. We're up, we're up in both. We're up in daily rounds, which we would say would be some new golfers anyway, but certainly, our season pass rounds are up a lot too, so everybody's playing more golf at this time.
My second, I don't know how the weather is comping, but I know it's been wet because, and my, this is more of a broader question for Garrett Cemetery, but golf too, and Public Works as well. Does that, does that constant mowing, does that affect our budget in any way, or is it just we have to move resources, labor resources? Do we, I mean, there's a cost, does it, does it come at the cost of these guys do something else, or is it kind of all over parks in the city, and whoever wants to take that, I guess?
Well, with the, with the golf course, we budget a certain amount of hours, and that's based on history. We track all the different parts of mowings from the greens, aprons, fairways, rough, so we've got a pretty good handle on how many hours that takes, and that's usually pretty constant, because during the summer, when the grass slows down, we don't mow. This fall, there's been a bunch of days we haven't mowed because of the weather, the grass isn't growing, so we kind of fluctuate on our hours. So when we don't need to mow, we don't, and that saves a lot of hours, and that kind of is a wash with the extra mowing that we have to do during the year. So we, we keep pretty good tabs on labor hours and that kind of thing.
So the wet fall, does it materially affect anything?
No, no.
And I think to piggyback off of that, though, you've got yourself and Chris as the full-time, you know, staff, and then a lot of your part-time refilling those other hours that are budgeted, so it's not like they're just sitting there idle when it's raining, you know, trying to find something else to do, they're not on the clock, obviously.
We usually try to send them home.
Yeah, so that helps the budgeting side of that, that, you know, you've only got two full-time people, and they've always got something to do when it's raining, I'm sure, so.
And of course, the mowers love it when there's moisture, because if you'll notice, some days they diagonal this way, some days they diagonal this way, some days they go straight away, and my husband does mow, and he likes it when there's some moisture there, so he knows where he's been and where he's going.
That's right. I just want to thank, you know, Dennis, Chris, and Jordan as the full-time staff of what they've done to get these numbers where they are. It doesn't happen organically, let's just be honest. You know, I was out on August 26th of 2020 and went with Brent and yourself, Brent Jones and yourself for a course tour, and saw, you know, before, some of these things had been implemented and hadn't seen a lot of the damage, and I was a victim of the loss of the Scotch pines along the driveway during Heritage Day as the tailgate of my pickup truck in the hospital parking lot took a golf ball. You can see the little divot, so I know the importance of those trees and the loss of those trees along there, so.
Yeah, it isn't just a tree.
And the importance of a learning center is straightening out that drive, so.
Thank you for having us.
I'd like to, I just want to kind of echo what Mayor Hoffman said. In the few months that I've been privileged to be part of the meetings of the Golf Commission, well, first of all, I should confess, I am not a golfer. I hope to someday be, but I know nothing about this, and I sit in those meetings and I am just continually amazed at the level of expertise I hear. Chris and Dennis, I think, are MacGyvers of the highest order. They'll talk about something that sounds really, really serious, broken, and they've figured out a way to fix it on pennies. And Jordan is obviously very creative in how he has generated business and grown that business, and I just am really, really impressed. I think we have a great gift here that many of us are not as aware of as we should be.
And I'm pleased that Julie has ridden with me on the golf course, Mayor Hoffman has ridden with me, Ms. Rothie has ridden with me, so there's three members here that have ridden with me. So there's three members here that have ridden with me to actually go in the back, behind the trees, to see what's behind the scenes on that. So I appreciate their taking time to listen to it also.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Larson. All right, moving forward to Leisure Services Commission update.
Mr. Mayor, good evening.
Good evening.
Council members, city staff, council guests, excuse me, and citizens of Waverly. I am Joel Johnson, and I am currently serving as the Chair of the Leisure Services Commission. And it is my privilege and duty to run through the summary for the last year of the department's accomplishments. We start with the mission statement, which is similar to the Golf Commission. "We believe in making the good life better by providing safe, modern, well-maintained, and aesthetically pleasing environments for the community of today and tomorrow." Our motto basically is "Leave it better than you found it", which is something that I have learned since I was a young Boy Scout. Members of the Commission, my co-chair is Derek Solheim this year, James Carver, Ryan Pins, Randy Nyendorf, and Tara Winter are long-term members. Angela Brunson joined us here this last spring. Brian Bergen, thank you, serves as our council liaison. And we appreciate the input and the insight in the workings of the council as well. You'll see the list of responsibilities, and I don't have the figures handy. But between the parks and the cemetery, there's over 400 acres that Leisure Services is responsible for within the city. That includes the parks, the cemetery, areas around the dog park, vegetation management, trails. There's an abbreviation up there, R O W, which I finally got Garrett to tell me was "right-of-way". So we are a busy and widespread team. Our powers and duties are, again, advisory. We go through budget with Garrett and look at items, change items, help with a little guidance and direction when Garrett asks for it. We recommend the budget then to the City Council. And we also discuss and recommend fees for rentals of units, parks, and so on. We also go through and review city policies and things that the Leisure Service Department is involved with and how they're involved with them. So policies and procedures become part of our duties as well. Long-term capital improvements program. There's been many that we have started over the years. Some are coming to fruition. For example, the Ball Diamonds are under the Leisure Services jurisdiction, if you will. And a lot of folks have been involved in that besides the Leisure Services. And we certainly appreciate all of their input, their expertise, in putting that together. We have some pictures of that coming up a little later on. We also strive to support activities that we sponsor. And I might mention in passing that on Saturday, the 6th of November, is our upcoming Candlelight Walk along the rail trail. We'll start behind Quick Star East over here. And between 5:00 and 7:00, we'll be out at the turnaround and we'll have a nice big bonfire and some hot chocolate. And if we're lucky, some candy. And we invite you all to come out for that, of course. Leisure Services staff. There's a lot of folks involved behind the scenes that help the Leisure Services Commission do what we have to do. The director, of course, is Garrett Royerden. And the office coordinator now has a name I can pronounce, Jen Johnson. The government building superintendent is Shane Ohes. I'm not good at names that I don't say quite often, so bear with me. Amy Ebley is a custodian. Public grounds superintendent is Paul Cheville. Paul's a great guy and a good leader. Grounds maintenance specialist, Corey Peterson, another great guy. New fellow on the roster is the athletic fields management specialist, Greg Westendorf, who will be in charge of the new Cedar River Park Ball Diamonds. And from what I saw at the open house on Saturday, he's fired up. And he's ready to go, and things really look great down there right now. Cemetery maintenance is John Karstens. John has been around for a long time with that. Vegetation management maintenance lead is Eric Shares. And maintenance specialist is Patrick Rinkla. And also, this summer, we were able to have 39 part-time seasonal workers to help with all of those acres that have to be mowed. Here's the staff, or as we call it, the lineup. On the left-hand side is Pat. And then John, and Greg. And you can see by his size that he's more than able to handle the baseball diamonds. We have Eric. And then Paul is kind of hiding in the back there. Jen, Shane, Garrett, and last but not least, is Corey. And to these folks, I give my congratulations and enthusiastic support for all that they do for the City of Waverly. Accomplishments. We've had a few, fortunately. And we want to touch on a couple of them here tonight. Phase one of the Cedar River Park complex has been completed. Phase two, which was the installation of the diamonds and so forth, started in April and is pretty much complete. There's a few things left to be done with the diamonds. The grass in the outfield has been planted and it should be ready to go early next summer. Monument repairs at Harlington. If you've been through there or been at any of the services that are held up there, there are many that have fallen into disrepair and some have even fallen over. And we were able this year to repair 31 monuments and restore them to pay due respect to those who are buried there. In partnership with the Exchange Club, we were able to install six new raised beds and add a new water line at the community gardens. This is the gardens over on Fourth Street Northwest, by the way. And we, again, won an award from the Healthy Home Town. They call it WAFL, and I'm not good with that acronym. We won $5,000 as a bonus. And I just want to add that some of that money went into vouchers and folks can use for purchases at the farmer's market. Part of the healthy attitude of the whole program. Well Mark Set the Pace Challenge. There was a virtual walk sponsored by Drake Relay. And basically, it was on an honor system. You buy the T-shirt, you register, you do the walk, and you fill in an online form. We really didn't win that, but we participated. And I think that's going to be something that we can promote again in the future. It was a nice evening for a walk. We did the loop over the bridge and around the other bridge and came back in just about a mile. So good exercise, good company. Trees for Kids. Again, we were able to hold that this spring. And the middle school kids who participated in that were able to plant a total of 115 trees, which is a good start. I want to compliment the team on the grants that they apply for. You see here that we received a grant for the Rolling Meadows Basketball Hoop and one for the Inclusive Playground at the Cedar River Park. This is money over and above budgeted numbers and really comes in very helpful for all that we do. Also, just to mention Trees Forever. It's been around Waverly for a good number of years. And this year, we celebrated the 30th anniversary of the cooperation with Trees Forever and the City of Waverly. Quite an accomplishment. Vegetation Management is working on a new prairie, little triangle over in the corner of Bremmer Avenue and Highway 3. For those of you who don't know where that is, that's over by Pizza Ranch. One of the biggest challenges we had this year was the tornado damage on the rail trail. Garrett tells me that there was over 500 hours of work and machine use over about a three-week period to get all of that cleaned up so the trail was ready. The athletic fields maintenance specialist, Greg, has been hired and has been on duty down there for a couple of months now. And like I say, I think he's going to be quite a good addition to the team. We, of course, are involved in the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee as well. And Jim Carver and Randy Nyendorf are representing Leisure Services on that commission. We're going to a couple of pictures here. You can see some of the pictures at Cedar River Park. In the upper left is the field that has the artificial turf infield. And I walked across that Saturday when we had the open house down there, and I was amazed at how well that has been put together. And actually, how soft it is. And I thought, well, it's too early in the afternoon to have a nap, so I'll just go see what else we have. And the lower right, you'll see the Miracle Field. And on Saturday, there was at least, I would say, 15 kids playing ball on that field, two of whom are using walkers. And that's what that field is all about. That's to be used for all the kids that want to play baseball but are in some way unable to participate fully. That is a great addition, and I think we should be very proud as a city that we have done that. Here's an overview of the park as it currently sits. You'll notice that there's room for concession stands and announcement stands and bathrooms and a tie-in to the bike trail and a few other things that will be coming up. And that is part of Phase Three. As we were walking around the area, looking at things on Saturday, and spoke to several members of the community who had come out, and we heard lots of good comments and lots of enthusiasm from the public about what was going on there and how great that really looked, even though it's only about 2/3 done. So it's going to be a great addition to the city. I might add that we received a grant from the Bremmer County Community Foundation to be included for the Inclusive Park. That park will go, you see the Miracle Field there in the left, excuse me, right center, and the diamond here on the bottom. It'll be right in between those two diamonds, right off the parking lot. The Bremmer County Community Foundation gave us a grant for $9,000. And the Black Hawk Gaming Commission gave us a grant for $250,000. That happens to be the largest grant they have ever given to an organization outside of Black Hawk County. So we should be very proud of that. Thank you, Garrett, for that effort. The next slide here, there's some private funding going on to help with things like the park and extra additions that'll go in there. And I would encourage you to visit the Cedar River Park Fund website. It's cedarriverpark.com for more information and the ability to contribute if you so desire. This is a picture. We talked briefly about the renovation of some monuments at Harlington Cemetery. On the left side, you'll see the monument as it stood when we started or when the project was started. Pretty well knocked off its foundation, tipped over, and in ill-repair. And on the right side, you'll see the after pictures where the monument has been cleaned up, remounted to the slab. In some cases, we've had to put in new slabs as well. So there is another bid coming in November, I believe it is, for next year's session for monument repair. Trees for Kids. Again, the middle school kids were involved in this, and they were able to plant a total of 115 trees. Again, that's a good start. This one happens to be taken down by the dog park. And when we did the dog park several years ago, we put several small trees inside the enclosed area for the dogs, which turned out not to be a very good idea. So these are outside the park. And of course, here's a picture of the progress of the raised beds at the community gardens. And the new prairie area over at Highway 3 and 20th Street. And the tornado. This is a sample picture of what it looked like out on that trail for quite a long ways. And again, over 500 hours of labor and machine use to clear the trail. That shows dedication. South Riverside Pavilion and Plaza. I was down there the other day and taking a look at it. A couple of sections of the new big sidewalk have been poured now with the imprint of the railroad tracks. And I just looked at that and I thought, man, does that bring back memories. Walking the railroad tracks in my hometown, sitting on a curb alongside the track, watching the trains go by from me to Carla. I think about it now and I think, boy, was I stupid. But we were kids. A lot of people were involved in the design and features that are incorporated into the South Riverside renovation. They include, of course, the Chamber of Commerce, Waverly Main Street, Farmer's Market, Garden Club, Historic Preservation Commission, Rail Trail Commission because I had to figure out where we could put the trail through the new park and with the new ice cream shop. Local businesses, and of course, the Leisure Services Department and Commission. South Riverside is being built for multiple uses, including weddings, receptions, family gatherings, music events, car shows, Farmer's Market. Farmer's Market, of course, Farmer's Market was involved in helping us get ideas for how to put it all together. One of the things that somebody mentioned to me the other day was that we should have a grand opening down there when we're ready and fill up the new pavilion with food trucks. So, we need to recruit some food trucks and we need to recruit some volunteers and ask the citizens of Waverly to come down and take a look. Challenges. There are always challenges. Biggest challenge in Leisure Services is finding staff for the summer season. Summer starts in April and ends in October. And a lot of folks aren't available on the beginning and the end of the season. We've struggled with this for years, and we manage. The pool, of course, has been a problem. With COVID, it was closed mostly. Our biggest problem right now is the lifeguard shortage. The lifeguards are shared between the pool and Wardburg. So, there's so many hours and there's so many people, and sometimes it just doesn't work out right. Natural disaster this summer was a tornado and the extra staff and hours or equipment and hours it took to clean that up. And as I mentioned, the seasonal staff at the beginning and the end of the season. The future, I think, is bright. Phase 3 of the Cedar River Park will begin next... Well, I guess actually as soon as we get going on it. Hopefully, South Riverside Park will be completed next year. And of course, the Park and Open Space Plan is in the process, and that should be wrapped up, I believe, by next fall, if I remember right. So, there's a lot on the plate. And I think we have the staff and the enthusiasm to get it all done. And we can do it with your help and your backing, and we thank you for that. We know that we can't do much of anything with what we have, and that's why we have involvement with the council and the citizens of Waverly to make it happen. Again, the commission hopes to continue to improve the quality of life of the citizens of Waverly by preserving the natural areas and the facilities for the citizens of today and the future. And our motto again, leave it better than you found it. With that, I'll end my remarks and open it up for any questions Garrett and I can field.
I've got one comment, and then I've got a question. Question probably more for James than it is for you or Garrett.
Okay.
I just wanted to point out that we still have a phase of the South Riverside Park project that will be coming in the future, which is the river access
Yes.
phase with the trails and walkways going down to the river to give people access to go down there and fish or do whatever they want to do down there. So, that's an important part that we were hoping to do earlier, but we've had to put off because of the construction on the Bremmer Avenue Bridge.
Right, and I did overlook that. That's my mistake. We started that early on in the process and opened up some of the river area, the riverbank there from the firehouse south. And then we found out that the bridge was going to be replaced, and then the bridge replacement got moved out even further. So, until the bridge is done, access to the river and that type of thing will be put off. So, but it's coming. It's in there.
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't mean to disparage your
Oh, no.
presentation. I just... It's still something that is in the works and is part of the plan, but has been put off for a bit yet, so... And then the question I had here, and this is both in the Golf Commission Report and the Leisure Services Commission Report. And I'm not zeroing in on exactly what this thing is. It's the Commission on the Comprehensive Plan, Bike and Pedestrian Trail Plan, and Park and Open Space Plan Steering Committee. I... What is that? Should I know what that is?
So, we went through the process and budgeted for reviewing the comprehensive landings plan this year, the pedestrian and trail plan, the open spaces park plan, and the, well, you can call it a separate plan for Memorial Park itself. Through the process, we pulled in individuals from the commissions that all be involved in this in order to get a firm to come to you on the first to start this whole process of beginning to review these plans together for gathering of information, but separate when the completion is done, so we have basically a Bible to follow for the next decade or if you're looking at the pool, the next 50 years, I guess. And so, that will come to you actually November 1st is our goal. We have to work through that. And
First of the 15th? Are we at the first?
First. And so, you'll have that in front of you, the firm that was selected will be here to present, and we'll actually start that process, and that'll be everybody. So, you'll all be involved in that from beginning to the end.
Okay.
So, we're just about to get underway, and it's going to be a big one. So, it'll take a good year to get through all that.
All right. And these haven't actually started to function yet. This is part of what will be the ongoing planning.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, the Comprehensive Plan is what gets us... Well, Matt's covered right now, but
Right.
...that broad 10-year picture of it's done roughly every 10 years.
I wasn't aware that we had actually started moving forward on that, so that's good. I'm glad. I'm happy. Glad to hear that, Rod. Thank you. Thank you all very much for your attention.
I just want to thank the commission and the city staff. I mean, considering the amount of territory that has to be covered in all of the projects, the staff really does a great job.
They do. We're very proud of those guys.
They're hard workers and passionate about things and very helpful to members of the community who call them with tree questions and weed questions, and we're just really fortunate to have them.
Yep, that we are.
And we need a new pool. Garrett gave me a tour. I'm telling you, the locker rooms smell exactly like they did in 1970 because they are the exact same locker rooms. But, you know, the places... I mean, Garrett was down there many nights late, making sure that things were tucked in for the night, so we just really need a new aquatic center badly.
We're looking forward to planning all of that out for Memorial Park and the changes and the additions and such. It'll come up and make it even better, so.
Joel, I've got a question I don't think you can answer. So, when the Cedar River Parks was first we began, there was a lot of, I'll say, pushback from the neighborhood, kind of concerns about what that was going to be like. Have we gotten any feedback from the neighbors about how they're feeling about the park at this point? Are they feeling better seeing it in completion? Are their juries still out, or what do we know?
We have several comments from the neighbors that are all positive. I don't have names and comments and such like that, but from what I've heard, especially at the Saturday open house, the neighbors down there are quite happy with the way that things have been put together, especially the drainage, because I think that'll help with the flooding area, the flash flood types up in that area. So, to the best of my knowledge, they're all happy to be part of that, so.
Thank you.
Brian, I did get an email from a neighbor about the fence, just basically the timing of when the privacy fence is going to be put in, and Garrett was able to communicate with that person, and that'll happen next year, next spring.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Let Garrett get comfortable. Item number four is follow-up to the discussion of allowing ATV, UTV, and golf carts on Waverly's roadways. Pitch this over to Mr. Bronner and go from there.
Sure. As you recall, when you have the minutes in front of you, we discussed this towards the end of July. And it was odd because the next day, we're talking about the staff, we had a bunch of different versions of what we heard. And that doesn't happen very often, so it was kind of a resemblance to what the discussion was. It was kind of a little here, a little there. We really weren't sure. We're talking about all of them, some of them ATV, X, Y, Z. We didn't know what was happening with all the different types of vehicles. And so, as we got caught up in a bunch of other things and had to set that aside, we said, we probably better bring this back and get some clarification as to what are we really talking about? And there was comments at the time that only one or two people had really reached out to council. You hadn't heard from a lot of the constituents. I don't know if you have since. We've not heard much of anything, comment here and there, but it's been months now. And so, we just want to get, again, more clarification as to what are we looking at, better direction as to are we going to look at changes, which part, all of it, some of it, and just have that discussion one more time. So, we're all clear tomorrow when we meet again that we're hearing the same thing. Because it was, like I said, it's odd that we don't have that consensus among ourselves after sitting here. So, that's what brings us tonight.
James, could you maybe start by refreshing our memories about current ordinances with regard to... My understanding is golf carts are allowed on the streets in some limited capacity. But can you just kind of give us the overview of that?
Yeah, golf carts are actually a separate part of the ordinances that we have. They have their own little section, and they're usually supposed to be driven. We had always thought it was to and from the golf course. That language doesn't exist. I kind of wish it would again, and we may bring that back for you to take into consideration because they may be getting a little out of control with kids driving them in the streets up and down. It's just dangerous, and the last thing we want is an accident. No seat belts, no helmets. They're just... They're supposed to have a yellow triangle in the back, a flag. Most of them don't, and they're still out there driving in the neighborhoods mostly. They're not in the streets as much. It's mostly in the neighborhoods. But again, that really hasn't been addressed in quite a while either. The only time it was brought up recently was when the construction was happening to allow people to go across the rail trail bridge to get to the other side of town since they couldn't go on the bridge. That's really the last time it was brought up. So, I do think it needs to be a part of another discussion, if not this discussion. But they are allowed throughout town. They can, of course, be on state highways, things like that, similar to ATVs, UTVs, which are not allowed in Waverly. The ones that are are there for a business purpose, identical to the state code itself. For certain industries, you can have ATV, UTV. They're licensed. They are permitted. Otherwise, they are not allowed to be throughout the city like a golf cart is. And so, that's probably the biggest distinction. We have had a little more experience with golf carts. This is kind of an emerging trend, I guess we want to call it. You see it a lot in smaller towns mostly. You don't see it in towns our size as often as you would think. And so, that's really just been prompted by a couple individuals to ask if we would consider it, and that's what started this conversation going down that road. And since then, you know, we've had some more research come in. I know we provided you with some documents that came out. We've seen issues in other cities. It's just, it's whatever you want to allow. But we just want you to have a good discussion about it before we get too far down the road so we know what we're supposed to be bringing back towards the council with a recommendation or something along the line.
Well, my recollection of this, and it has it in the minutes here, that this sort of dovetailed off of the proposal by Bird Scooters to have electric scooters in town. And that generated a discussion about, well, what do we do about things that might be coming in the future like electric bicycles? Are they going to be regulated like motorcycles or like regular bicycles? There had been some suggestions that we should allow side-by-sides, which I understand now are different than ATVs.
Yes.
They're more like golf courts than the carts. And then we had some discussion about golf carts, you know, is it time to take a look at that ordinance again? And I think the consensus was, as I recall, was that maybe it was a good idea to have some kind of a group of people made up from various commissions to take a look and see if we should have some kind of a overarching ordinance about these new types of transportation vehicles before they became a problem. Now, I personally don't really care one way or the other, frankly. I think we've been fine without having this in the past. And whether we do something or don't do something, I just don't feel personally informed to make a decision on what we allow and what we don't allow and if we allow things, what restrictions they should have. So, that's why it was my... I don't know if it was my suggestion, but my feeling that we should have some group of citizens look into this because there are clearly some people who want this and clearly some people don't. And I really don't know what the pros and cons are whatsoever. Now, we can either do that with a group of citizens or we can have city staff give us a recommendation. You know, that's fine, too. I just don't feel qualified at this point to say, yes, we should make some changes or no, we shouldn't make some changes. So, that's kind of where I'm coming from on this. There seem to be enough people that were interested in doing this that it's worth looking at. And we have some of these new technologies like the electric bikes, and we'll probably have other things, electric scooters and other things that will be coming on in the future that maybe we can get ahead of this a little bit and say these things are going to be permitted and this is how they're going to be regulated. But here again, I don't know if it really requires a citizen task force or we can just do this with city staff. But I would want to have some more information on this before we've made a decision going one way or another.
Good.
That was my understanding coming out of the meeting of what we were looking for. It's just pros and cons of the safety issue, traffic management, you know, whether having a combined task force like law enforcement, streets, whoever. Because I think I've heard from both sides, some people are very interested in it. You know, other people dread it, so it'd be nice to be more informed.
I would echo that. And another thing that I would also like to find out, the small handful of people that I've talked to who do this and who are in favor of seeing it happen in Waverly, when they describe to me how they use these vehicles and so on, I think that sounds like I can see why there's an appeal to it. But I picture what they're doing mostly in the context of smaller towns like Shell Rock, Janesville, Parksville, and so on. And then I try to extrapolate that to what would it look like in Waverly? And that's where I get feeling like I would really need a lot more information. So, one thing I'd be interested in is are there other communities comparable to our size in Iowa who have done this? And if so, I'd love to talk to those communities and find out, you know, what the experience was like. How did they set it up? How did they make sure it was safe and so on?
Well, the one thing that I've really noticed is if you look at Shell Rock and you look at Janesville where these are legal, their in-town speed limit is 20 miles per hour. And I don't know about Parksville, but they have a different in-town speed limit. So, I don't know, you know, are we talking about lowering our in-town speed limit to accommodate these vehicles? Are they still going to be safe at 25 miles per hour? I mean, I know that the faster they go, the more dangerous those accidents are going to become. Now, I've had conversations with some constituents who are very much in favor of these UTVs. And, you know, they say, you know, they're still licensed, they're still insured, they still have seat belts, but, you know, they don't have airbags, they don't have crumple zones. They're simply not as safe. On the other hand, we have scooters. I mean, we've got kids riding scooters around that, in my opinion, aren't especially safe either. And I don't know that these UTVs are more dangerous than scooters. I don't think they are. So, I wouldn't want to ride a scooter. I wouldn't want my kids riding scooters. But that doesn't mean that I can say, you know, that my safety standards apply to other people. Now, I am very interested about this material we got recently from Polaris, which is one of these manufacturers of UTVs, which one of the things they say in here explicitly is this is not meant for on-road use. So, when I read the manufacturer saying that we probably shouldn't allow these in the city, it's hard for me to say that we should be allowing these in the city. But I do think that Waverly is kind of at the size, kind of right on that cusp between if we were any smaller, it'd be easy to say, yeah, this is okay. And if we were any bigger, it'd be easy to say, no, this is a bad idea. But I think we're kind of right on that edge between whether or not this is a good idea or not. I mean, I'm sure that if we did allow them, we would not allow them on any of the state highways. We wouldn't allow them on any streets that have a speed limit above 25 miles per hour, which begs the question of how they're actually going to get across the river. So, I mean, I think there are definitely a lot of questions. I agree with Rod that I think our consensus before was to put some kind of an ad hoc community together to kind of talk this through and come up with recommendations.
And I also think that's an important point that he touched on, and you as well. There's a plethora... There's a plethora of vehicles, recreational vehicles now. There's the scooters with the little flag on the top, and there's the golf carts, and there's all these different versions of ATV, UTV, ROV. And, and like Rod said, the motorized scooters that Bird wanted to propose and so on. So I think if we're gonna, if we are going to address it, we need to address it in a comprehensive way and with as much foresight to what kinds of vehicles there may be in the future as well as we possibly can.
And I like the idea of bringing golf carts back in that conversation as well. That, you know, any, any rules we come up with for ATVs and UTVs and electric scooters and e-bikes should also include golf carts.
I think one of the things that's important here is this is a, this is a growing trend. And I think that if we don't lean into this, um, there, there could be some negative impact there. And then if you look at, you know, some of the other trends, fuel costs and, you know, the government's very heavily going to consider a per mile tax. Well, consumers are just going to avoid their vehicle as much as they can and look to some of these alternates. So as we're seeing, they're going to ride the golf, the golf carts whether it's in an ordinance or not. So I think it's our responsibility to provide the safest venue within what the world is actually doing and what they're, what they're living. I am a little concerned about the ATV. But again, they're going to do it no matter what council does. We should embrace that and provide a safe, um, you know, safe, uh, driving conditions for that. One of the things I think that we could maybe consider here is we look at the city and identify, I called them bicycle boulevards before, but I guess they're whatever vehicle that's not a car boulevard. And we wouldn't close those streets to traffic, but we would just discourage traffic on those streets. So it would make it, you know, very pleasant for the residents there and very safe for, for those vehicles. And I, you know, you guys could hammer out which streets, but, you know, we need an east-west route, north and south in Bremer and north and south, east and west of the river to accommodate that. So that's, that's my general thoughts on that. I think that we should, um, and I am hearing growing support in the community. And you look at the sales things of these, these are selling, people are buying these things. Um, you know, ATVs and UTVs are licensed, so those have to go through a licensing process. And I know we don't, you know, have that with the golf carts. So that's a little concerning about how, you know, if we're going to regulate it, are we not tracking it and so forth, but...
I think piggybacking off of that, if we put together some kind of an ad hoc committee, we would definitely want, um, a voice for law enforcement in terms of how we would enforce any of these regulations. So if we're putting any regulations in, which one of them are actually enforceable and which ones are not, so that we're not wasting our time making rules that can't be enforced. So I think that any sort of committee like that, we would definitely need to make sure that law enforcement has a voice so that we're, you know, putting in place laws that make sense.
Um, I think that, you know, we, yes, we want to include law enforcement, but we should also include maybe somebody at the health center, Waverly Health Center and the hospital, um, you know, emergency medical services or somebody in the emergency department that works there that sees the injuries that come from ATVs specifically, um, uh, just for the safety of this as well. And give some of that input. The more input, the better, I guess.
Yeah, I do think it's interesting. I mean, I, we just got these handouts tonight, but it is interesting that these, uh, the manufacturer organizations are saying do not use them on the road. And so I'm interested to hear more about that, right? That contrast between people who buy them.
And it's not clear if that's ATVs or UTVs or both.
Right.
I mean, that's definitely an ATV manufacturer. I don't know if that applies to UTVs as well or not.
Right. So it'd be interesting to know more about that.
I know they make UTVs, but I don't know if the recommendations also apply to UTVs or not.
Well, what you're showing is actually for a Ranger, which is a UTV.
Is it?
It's not necessarily, it's the bigger UTVs. Polaris is a very popular one. And I guess it explains it in there. And Rich is right here. You want to talk to law enforcement? Well, the chief is sitting right here. Um, there are already laws in place that, that are going to make this more difficult than it is just because they cannot travel a lot of places you think they can. The cross streets of the city are state highways and they cannot be on them. Period. So again, how are you going to get in and out of Waverly? Is it all going to be coming down Horton Road and racing through there? And that's the concern. They explain it right in the documents. You have car tires built for highway, you have these knobby tires built for off-road. They're going to slide, they're going to be slick, the suspension's different. I don't know if anybody's driven them. I've been in them. Yeah, they're fun when you're out and they'll mess around. Highway, not as much. It's a little greasy. They, you get a little too much speed on it, you're going to feel it. They're just not built for that.
You make tires for highway though.
What's that?
You make tires for highway.
They sure do. If you're going to trade them in and out all the time to come to town or not.
The harder ones on ours, so, because that's all we're trying to do with it. And one thing...
Ma'am, I'll, I'll entertain you to come up and, and address the council at the podium. Just for that one comment though regarding the tires, since it was entertained from us up here.
Yeah, they do make them. And we switched ours out so we could drive them in the streets because we do take ours to Janesville and drive around and enjoy their, uh, food and whatever. And as far as driving down the highways and wondering how you're going to get around Waverly, all you have to do is just allow them to cross. They get up to speed, they can go 45 miles an hour. So you wouldn't have to change the speed limit at all. 25, 20 to 25 is not going to be that big of a difference as far as driving down the city streets.
All right. Can you just let the city clerk know your name and your address?
Sherry Meehlis. It's M-O-E-H-L-I-S. And it's 221 Second Avenue Southwest.
Sherry is S-A-G-R-Y.
Thank you, ma'am.
On the golf carts crossing Bremer, is that home rule or is that just, we just do it and hope the state doesn't notice?
It's all state law, whether it's a golf cart or a UTV or an ATV. I mean, Rich, I don't know if you want to comment on this, what is and isn't, but I think...
But our city codes is it's legal to cross Bremer, right?
Yeah.
But for only crossing purposes.
Right. It has to be at a ninety-degree angle. It's a lot more specific in the state code in reference to ATVs and ORVs and golf carts. So, yeah, it's home rule, probably the best way to describe it in reference to the golf carts. And, uh, so cities can, um, allow them on streets that are in their jurisdiction, just like the county can or board of supervisors can do that for the county roadways as well. So the state does give us permission to do that if we choose to.
Chief, what is the rule for county roads?
Same thing. If the, the board of supervisor would be faced the same decision that you would be deciding whether or not to allow them on the county roadways.
So at this point, they are not?
The county, Bremer County has allowed.
Has allowed them.
Certain areas, yes.
Okay. So if they're driving, let's say, from Bremer to Waverly down that county road, could, do they have to stop at city limits then at this point?
Yep.
Okay. All right.
Yep. And you got to take into consideration the difference between the city and the county.
Yeah.
And there's allowable reasons that you don't have to get permission from the county and also the city for ag purposes, just like we can allow vehicles of husbandry through. There's rules in the state that allow the use of ORVs on the roadways, but they're specific to probably about four different reasons.
Yeah, I think that's what we need info about, is what is the current state of the law? And just to have a discussion, more information about the pros and cons, safety, as Heather mentioned, and et cetera.
Chief Purcell, are you aware of, of communities in Iowa that are comparable to Waverly who, which have allowed these?
Yep. I don't know of any that are similar to our size. Um, I, you know, typically what I see is the, is the smaller communities. And current state law is what our ordinance reflects. Um, what we've added to the state law is the ability to use that power. Um, because it was about nine or 10 years ago, uh, we went through this and created the ordinance to allow it. We did that for individuals that wanted to use it for their work. And so we allowed it for this, the snow removal, we allowed it for landscaping for those, uh, industries and then also for athletic events. And then it also allows me to do it for special events. We allow it for Bremer County Fair when they're transporting equipment back and forth. So our, our current ordinance reflects state laws, the addition of some purposes.
To offer an answer to Ms. Meyer's question, did you know of another community or?
Yeah, two of them actually. Prairie Uchee in Wisconsin, they're allowed on city streets and Waukeah in Iowa, too.
Okay.
They're kind of in that class, I suppose is the way I look.
Okay.
Most people that do ride them want to be able to get out of town.
Yeah, you got to come up to the podium, sorry.
We got procedure here.
Yep. Come up to the podium if you, I was just looking for just the, the list of the couple towns. Normally, we don't allow public interaction during the, the study session, but since we engaged earlier to, to get the reference point, I'll allow it. Uh, and then that'll be the end of that for, for this session. Go ahead, sir.
Okay. Uh, most, most of the people, I have a UTV myself, which is a lot different than a golf cart or a ATV because mine has a horn, light and dim beam headlights. It has a e-brake, it's got turn signals. It's basically equipped like a car. And a lot of them today are. The cities themselves set those rules like Prairie did, Waukeah, whether you re, they're required to hit those. And, uh, young kids are not allowed to drive UTVs without, I believe they have to wear helmets at a certain age, you're up to a certain age.
Yeah, you gotta be 16 or older.
Do too, yeah. Which makes a difference, too, as to, myself, the only interest I have in it is to be able to go out and get gas and drive out of town. Most people don't ride around towns, but like they do the golf carts.
Can you give the clerk your name and address as well?
Oh, Danny Strossig. Got 1404 Round Horn Street.
Thank you. Mr. Bronner, do you have direction at this point?
I guess I'll see him.
Or do you need to go across the dais and?
No, I don't see the...
Get an opinion?
I think we know where we're at.
Okay.
We're off to get a committee together, I guess. I'm not sure of who and talk about this yet again and then bring it back one more time and we'll see what it looks like, so.
I mean, I do want to point out that Prairie Uchee is about 6,000 people and Waukeah's about 4,000. So they're both, you know, significantly smaller than Waverly.
Yeah. Um, just for the record, you know, this is just a discussion item for the council to, again, like Mr. Bronner, introduce the matter as far as investigative where we wanted to go. I do appreciate the, the input from, from the couple members of the community. Again, it's typically not something that we entertain, but since there was, was an engagement there with Mr. Bronner, I felt it was necessary to allow that to, to happen. But out of normal procedures, there will be further discussion, as was just indicated about this. And if it goes forward to drafting ordinances, that kind of thing, there will be public hearings. So I ask you to, you know, engage at that time with, with the council, your opinions and concerns on, on both sides of the issue, so. All right? Thank you. Move forward to item number five, City Finance 101. Bronner?
Okay. So it's not something I was wanting to do this early, but with everything you've seen in the papers and a lot of the comments and questions I've had all over town, whether I'm trying to get groceries or get gas or God knows what else, I feel it was time to go through this yet again. This will be the fifth time I've gone through this since I've been here in Waverly. We do this every year. But to do it a little earlier, and all of you should be aware of this, but for the viewing public and others, um, we'll kind of educate you a little bit on how we go through our process, whether it be budget and the financial of the city and how this works in general. So I'll try and keep this brief. This is a lot longer meeting than anticipated it would be. So we'll start off with all the things we don't control, which is a lot, um, and kind of the timing of it. So this time of year in 2021, we would be looking at what's called an equalization order. You've probably heard of that before. That is something the State Department of Revenue decides in Des Moines whether or not the assessor in the county has been applying enough valuation to certain classes of property. They released it a month ago. We were not aware of that. Apparently, they don't bother to tell us that anymore. So we do not have an equalization order this year. So the assessor has done the job they should, so all the properties are valued appropriately. In 2015, we did have an equalization order. Uh, that was a 7% increase in residential property. So when that happens, and you can go to the Department of Revenue website, they'll list all the equalization orders, all the different cities and counties, whatever it may be. Every property in that class is increased that percent regardless. It doesn't matter. It simply goes up because they feel it's not been properly valued across the city or the county, and that's how they arrive at that. So, um, we do not have any kind of equaliz, the equalization order in Bremer County for any class of property, which is good. So they're doing their job, and that's one thing that we have to look at every odd year it comes in. So 2119, 1715 is the last one that actually occurred. So we've checked that, we're good going forward there. The other item is the rollback. We've talked about multiple times. So when you have a parcel property and the assessor, which again, this is the county assessor, nothing that we control, sets the value of that property, that doesn't mean we get to tax for that amount on the property. In fact, the valuation of the entire city of Waverly, if we wanted to sell it tomorrow, is about $800 million. That's what the total 100% value is of the city. Now, you only get the tax against $500 million. So the rollback eliminates $300 million of value you could tax against and therefore reduce taxes all the way across, et cetera. But that's not the way the state of Iowa works. So right now, and this is current, because they haven't released the rollback, not that I've seen for next year, ag is at about 84%, uh, residential is at about 56%, uh, industrial commercial is at 90, and then multi-residential families at 67.5%. That's been dropping some percentage every year since they started it back in 1314. Eventually, it will meet and be the same res, ever residential, probably in another two years, roughly. So each of those properties, as I said, so if you have a $100,000 house, because it's simple math, 56% is all you can actually tax against it. So only 56,000 is taxable. So if you were able to 100%, that's a lot easier for us. You'd collect more revenue on less tax rate, but we don't do that in Iowa. And so we're different in other states. So again, we lose $300 million roughly from what we are valued 100% to what we can actually tax against. And that includes TIF as well. 50 million of that is TIF. So it even reduced it further. So straight taxes, you don't get to include TIF. It's only about $450 million. If you apply debt service, you can include TIF, which makes it 500 million, and it actually spreads it across a broader, broader range of value. So as we start into the budgets, we don't receive that information until January 1st. That's when we actually by law have to have the valuation sent to us from the county auditor. And then we can actually start looking at scenarios based on what we've received in apartments, what the tax rates will be, et cetera. So contrary to what has been said, uh, spending does not increase valuations. I'm not sure where that comes from. Valuations are set by the assessor based on the property value, home sales, increases, decreases, near values, permits, additions, et cetera. That's how your valuations are determined. It has nothing to do with what we as a city do at all. In fact, it factors us, we don't factor it. It's just a very clear consensus to understand that. So as I said, we're worth about 800 million, but I'd sell it right now for 790 if somebody wanted to. Counsel, we'll leave here, it'll be a nice island, we'll get, it'll be fine. 790, it's on sale. So what tax rates? People always want to know how our tax rates develop. So you're going to take the valuation of the entire city. You're going to apply the rollback that the state Department of Revenue sets for that as well. Then you're going to look at what you as a council believe we need as a city to function and operate going forward. How much are we going to spend? And that has to be net of local option sales tax, which is a different funding source, and road use tax, which is a different funding source, and water, sewer and solid waste and even airport, all are generated by fees. Airport is a small general fund component, but it's very small. It is a enterprise fund in itself. It takes care of itself as it goes, water, sewer, solid waste. Once all that's removed, what's left is what we tax for. And though doubt the dollar amount against the valuations at hand generate a tax rate. So not the other way around, that's the way it works. So valuation, bunch of rollbacks, apply to your spending is where you're going to get your tax rate. It's not difficult, it's just, it's a process to get through. So of that, the only thing we control is spending. Everything else is determined by the state, the assessor, that we don't have any dictation of what that's going to look like for us. So that's how that's going to work. One of the other big items that's been talked about is city debt, and I'm fine talking about that. There's always a discussion of, you know, we have too much debt, we have too little debt. It's all an opinion. I think if you have a million dollars in debt and you can't manage it, it's too much debt for you. I think it comes down to how you can manage debt, and according to Moody's, we managed it extremely well. So I personally don't believe it's too much, because we're able to manage it. We pay it off in 10 years. Moody's likes that, they give us high ranks for it. Our bids are in, our rates are down. That's all very good indicators that we are doing a good job financially as to how we're managing it. But the question has come up, you know, how much debt do we have? The June 30 audit was used, there's a number floated around, it wasn't exactly correct. The actual amount of debt we had June 30, 2020, was $31,410,000. That's in the financial notes, number seven, it's not in the statistical section where everybody looks at. That includes other things that aren't part of your actual debt, premiums that we don't pay back, and discounts that we have to provide. All that clouds that number, so it's not an accurate figure at all. Financial notes, actually page 55, $31,410,000. So went back through 10 years of bonds, which was not enjoyable at all. Went way back before I was even here to figure out what is even in that number, and I can give you a rundown of it. Of that $31,410,000, a little over 11.2 is the Parkway. We're paying off multiple years of that being brought up, whether it was land acquisition, the actual construction, the portion prior to the one most recently finished, again, that was borrowed as well, it's $11 million. The Drive Run Creek, there's still about 6.3 million left on that project. Almost 10 million total was borrowed, you've paid that down over how many years? Back in 1415, when some of this was happening, land acquisition, engineering, about 6.3 is the Drive Run Creek. About 7.8 million is other streets you've done, from First Street Northwest, just the engineering, we haven't factored the other one in, Fourth Street, Cedar Lanes, first phase, 20th Street Northwest, Business 218, the Technology Parkway, Oak Ridge Circle, they expanded the turn lanes there. That's the oldest bond we have left, in fact, that falls off this year. And then the Third Street Bridge itself, the engineering to start that process. All that remaining pieces of those is about 7.8 million for all those road projects. You have about 1.4 million left in Breamer Avenue, mostly DOT payments, the facade grant, you know, everything that went along that corridor. We have 1.3 million in water sewer projects. A chunk of that is when the water tower was painted, and then some other extensions of sewer mains, things like that. Normally, we do revenue bonds for that, and water fees would take care of it. We did general obligation bonds instead and used water fees to pay it off. You can do either one, one counts against your capacity, one doesn't. I prefer the one that doesn't, because our capacity is somewhat limited, though it's getting a lot better in the next year or two. You have about 400,000 in airport costs over the years. Talking about, all this goes back almost a decade, so acquisition, land improvement, all that's about 400,000. You get about 600,000 left on sidewalk programs. So when this all started, we borrowed money as a city to start putting out the sidewalk programs in all seven districts and getting those ready and going. We've exhausted that more than, and so it's been on hold till we can reduce that deficit. But that's what started it, was some borrowing at the time, about 600,000 left. You have 700,000 for the ball diamond, and that's all the dirt work, and that's the maximum we can borrow, and we've done that. And since it was just recently done, we've not paid any off yet, at least by 2020, June 30, we hadn't. We have now another year out. South Riverside Parks, about 480,000 remaining. You have about 450 on some pool expansions, projects that were done six, seven years ago. Champion's Ridge is about 400,000 left on that property purchase. You've got about 170,000 left on the traffic study, about 112,000 on trail work, and about 38,000 left on parking lots that were done five years ago, roughly, or six. That's 31,410,000, that's your debt. So if people want to comment that it's too much, that's fine, I don't disagree necessarily. My question would be then what would you have not done to lessen it? And so, you know, I can tell you the answer is how it goes back and forth. You say, well, that's too much, well, how much is enough? Well, I don't know, I'm just saying it's too much, that's fine. Well then, what should we not have done? Well, I'm not saying we shouldn't have done it, we shouldn't have borrowed for it. Well then, if you don't want to borrow for it, you have to tax for it. So it's kind of a catch 22, what are you going to do? If you don't want to do it, then you have to pay for it somehow, so you can go borrow, bond, tax, or not do it. It's not real hard, you only have a few choices, that's it, that's all we can do as a city. We can't get so creative, we can't play the market and lottery tickets, so I do think lottery tickets would be a really good idea. Just a thousand dollars a month, I mean, think of what you could do, what if? City League's probably rolling over right now. Well, why not, like a thousand dollars, come on.
As a mathematician, I can tell you it's a bad bet.
You know what, says the guy that bet $400 million earlier, he's thinking it's a pretty good idea.
Powerball would be the way if we're going to do that.
Right? Three bucks a week, I think you're right on. So that gets us out of debt, I don't want to get into a lot of that. June 30 to 21, we were down to 29,870,000, and that includes the three and a half million we sold for the second part of Cedar Lane, the First Street Southwest, and the final payment to DOT. So we are paying off far more than we let out for debt this last year. Unless you issue debt by this summer, next summer, then the fiscal, you'd be down to 25.7. That's only 60, about 64% of our capacity, so it really has dropped a lot. Because again, every 10 years, all this stuff is gone, and we're paying it down 10% at a clip, it's coming off really quick. That's, again, depending on what you do in the budget that we'll get to. So I kind of wonder, how far have we been doing this back? And so I went in the vault, which, very scary at night, that thing is, that door shuts, you're hoping it opens again, that thing is scary. We have audits back to the late 60s, and some of those are special audits, they don't tell you a lot. But I did pull one from 1972, and there's debt all over that. So this has been going on since 1972 at least, and probably prior, it's just the way the audits read. But there are multiple pages of debt service funds. The one I enjoyed was the liquor fund, I didn't know we had one. And I'm going to have to look into that, it was profits from liquor sales. And it's a separate fund by itself in the late 60s, 70s, I'm thinking.
Think they closed that 185 or so?
I don't know, but it was enticing to look at it, wish I had more time to read it. But again, scary, cobwebs, vault, not so much. It's by myself in there, I didn't really enjoy that, so. But yeah, 70s, it goes way back. So debt has just been a motive of doing projects for municipalities, governments, for a long time. It's just the only way you can do it. To try and save up the tax for that is unbelievable to try and do that. You know, $11 million Parkway, how long would it take us to save $11 million to be able to do that thing? Or pay as you go, the bridge only stops halfway, can't really finish that next year, you kind of got to do the whole thing. So that's what kind of set us up. So on budget then, as you know, right now, as we've already started to get our stuff together, we're looking at strategic planning to go with you guys, probably early November, somewhere in there. We'll get together, we'll kind of walk through the things you're wanting us to look at, pay attention to, an update on the projects we have, et cetera, kind of what we're seeing. Department heads get their budget usually right before Thanksgiving. Mid-December, we get them back, we start to compile it, and again, evaluations come in January 1st, that's when we can kick off doing formulations of what does the tax rate look like with this scenario? What about this scenario? What does it do to the debt service, what does it do to our capacity? All that stuff can finally take place January 1. Until then, there's not much we can really do without knowing what our rates are going to actually be for valuations. Eventually, then, we get to our Saturdays, which you know, everybody enjoys. And so, you know, if people really want to understand city finance, come sit on Saturday. Yeah, it's a lot of fun, but anywhere from four to 12 to 16 hours of Saturday. Pete's there.
He's there for the free meal.
Breakfast ain't worth it someday. But that's the thing, you've all been through it. We were lucky enough to do it on one Saturday last time versus the two 16-hour. And then the council meetings after, I mean, it can take a long time, but every single dollar that's going to be spent is included in that session, right, I mean, everything. And that's what I guess is concerning when you hear some of the comments that are out there. Every single thing that goes on here comes before you as a council in one way or another. If it's not budgeted or it's over budget, it comes as an actual item. If it's equipment or project that's budgeted, it goes in consent agenda, you see it anyway. And if it's small enough, we don't have it anywhere, it comes out in dispersments and financials. Nothing goes without you seeing it and approving it. So I don't know how we spend all this money at the end of the year, we recuse the doing, that's kind of frustrating to hear that, because you see it, we all see it, and if it isn't budgeted, it's got to come before you, that's policy procedure, and it's a check and balance that keeps that from happening. So I'm not real familiar with the scenario that occurs, but it hasn't been since I've been here. Then as you know also, we have two budget hearings now we have to do. One wasn't good enough, now we have to another one to make sure you really want to approve it, and that all has to happen by March 31st. So about mid to late February, we're pretty much done. March hearings come, July 1 kicks in, and that's when we start that new fiscal year. So that's kind of the budget process in a sense, and how we kind of go forward and procedurally how we adopt it and go. Is there a question you have? Well, I'm running through this as quick as I can get through it, because you all are aware of this. But hopefully, it'll help the public understand that, you know, we are responsible for what we're doing. You have a choice in everything, single thing that you do. We're handling things fine, because we'd be in trouble if we weren't, and we'd know about it. So I guess I'll stop there and field questions if you've got them.
Guess, question I kind of want to put out there as far as numbers so people can understand.
Sure.
Would be, what is kind of our total budget, which would include the water sewers, that expenditures?
Probably in the mid 20s, 26, 28, 29 million, depending on the year.
And what is our asking typically in property tax?
Six to seven. Again, depends on the year, I think we're at seven, I want to say last time, I didn't bring my budget with me, I should have done that.
Six or seven million dollars a year from property taxes, so if we wanted to do a $10 million project.
Well, yeah, it'd take you almost two full years of everything, which we couldn't obviously do.
Just not spending anything for two years in order to save the money.
Yeah, and of course, we're limited in how we can spend certain things, local options a certain way, and road use a certain way, and certain projects have to go a certain way. So you really couldn't allocate everything to one anything, but I see the point you're making. Yeah, it's, projects are hard. We waited an extra year to get that one to fit it into the budget, $11 million, and they actually had us slightly bump above our 80% for a month, while the timing worked out. That was a scary one. It's done, I love it, we've got it done, we're paying it down quick, but those are hard to get in there. I mean, that's one third of our entire capacity was that project at the time, so you just don't hope and have that money so other to weigh. And we tried, as you recall, we went to the federal government multiple times for tiger grants, and we got nothing. Time after time after time, we just can't compete with the cities that size when it comes to some of that federal funding. So we had to go alone if we're going to do it at all, and we're lucky we could do that. So glad it got done.
I mean, I would also point out that if we're trying to use that approach of, say, saving up money for a project, there's no guarantee that you can't spend two years saving up, and then someone else gets on council and says, you know, we were saving up for this bridge, but I think I'd rather pay for this, you know, driving range of the golf course. Is, you're really subject to kind of the winds, and I think it's hard to plan if you're trying to take that approach, because you never know when there's suddenly going to be a change in the winds, and someone's going to see an opportunity to spend money that wasn't planned for. So I think that's one of the big concerns I see with taking that, you know, money-first approach, is it's really difficult for long-term planning.
Well, they have to be a whole council that would make that decision, just to be fair, it'd be a majority of a council that have to do that. But I hate to even utter it, Green Bridge, many generations have been through that with different councils every two years, and just can't seem to get the direct, here it is. Luckily, we were able to get a consensus, you guys were to at least have it removed and start some process. But it's been, I mean, it's my fourth time in six years almost through that very thing, because people change, personalities change, ideas change, and all of a sudden, we're heading down a different path. It's not good or bad, it's just different, and we adjust as staff and go forward accordingly, that's all you can do.
And to be fair, there are items that we do budget where we save up money over time, like police vehicles.
Yeah, equipment, we're very good about that.
That, fire trucks, things like that, where we set aside each year so much because we know this is what we're going to need to replace. Or we set so much every year because we know every four years we have to replace police cars, so we're going to set enough, I remember what our cycle is, three years?
It's three.
Three years. But we have it enough so that over the course of three years, we've set aside enough for that year that we're going to purchase, it's there, and then we do it again for the next time that we have a cycle. It's, so there is some things that we do budget that is essentially taxing ahead in order to pay for it. But when we're talking about a big project, you're either talking about raising property taxes 50, 75% to pay for one project one time, or, you know, overtaxing by 10% for five, six years in order to save up that money.
The other issue when you're doing that to save up money are increasing costs. I mean, if you have a million-dollar project today, that it will cost a million dollars today, and you say, well, we're going to save up $100,000 a year until we have a million dollars, by the time that 10 years is up and you have the million dollars, that project might now cost probably 1.2 or 1.3 million. And you start, you start the process.
So chase inflation and costs, and we see supply chain issues and everything, the exceptions that we've had this year, whether it be equipment, it's taking 10 months to get in, needs to be two, we're battling that right now. A lot of the vehicles we wanted to get, there's no more shipments going, we have to wait. We've ran into a lot of this here as well, anyway, adjust. That's the one thing I will say is, staff's been very good about, we're flexible and we adjust. If we have to wait till the spring, we do. Our whole goal is within that 12-month period, you've allowed us to purchase these things, and we somehow get it done. And it has been a little bit of a challenge this year, but.
I'll just piggyback, piggyback what Councilman Bergen said, you know, about, you know, future councils, mayor, you know, taking steps and maybe putting a roadblock in for projects. And, you know, one of the most recent ones, you know, being Cedar River Park, you know, two years ago, there were some insinuations that, you know, new leadership around the dais would, you know, stop that in an effort to go back to a previous idea. And obviously, you know, that didn't happen, so they're not always, you know, those scary moments that there's going to be roadblocks. You know, I think it's a good effort to have the comp plan that gives us direction, strategic planning, that kind of guides us down those roads, not that those things can't happen, but we just have to be careful of insinuating that that's what somebody's, you know, goal is. But it does happen.
Cedar River City is often, it's probably happened here without us necessarily knowing, I mean, things change direction.
Yep.
It's just a matter of time, and if we can't get projects completed, they may not get completed.
Yep.
One thing to consider is inflation works both ways, and right now, that's, I think that's one thing that every elected official everywhere is going to have to be aware of and accountable for, that, you know, the value of the money is a bit of a question right now. You know, I'm ordering furniture six months out, and I might end up paying, I likely will be paying more for it when it arrives. That's really unprecedented, I mean, really strange. And we could go through all the different quarters of the economy on what's going on, but there's some, there's some questioning of the value, I mean, can you imagine that in any other industry? And you imagine if Mike was trying to, if this happened in measurement, and inches today were different than tomorrow, and he was trying to build a bridge, that would be a mess. And so that's what we have, with our money is a mess. So we just have to be careful with debt.
Yeah, the other thing I learned through the process is, we don't even borrow the maximum that we could, right? We have a cushion that we have self-imposed, that hopefully we never have to go above. I know it gave you indigestion to have to go up briefly for the Cedar River Parkway, but. And then the other thing I noticed going through the budget cycles is how little really the department budgets change from year to year. I mean, if they go up, it's typically because of some equipment purchase, or maybe health insurance costs have gone up or something, but, you know, the budgets are dramatically similar every year, and you wouldn't think that. And I think that the department heads come in thinking lean typically with our budgets, and we don't make dramatic changes to them typically when we review them.
Right, what moves a needle is big equipment and projects. For us, it's all pretty flat, we don't control insurance, it's claim-driven, we like to think we can control our claims. I'm not getting sick this month, we'll help you out. IFRS is not controlled by us, FICA is not controlled by us. Contracts are negotiated multi-year in advance. All that stuff locks you in, you're already here, and then the state takes a rollback or a backfill away, which they did, over the next how many years, that'll set us back a little. There's just very little that you actually control other than your piece of spending, and even that spending, it comes down to equipment, which is on a rotating cycle. Wear it out as long as we can, we've got some trucks running around parks that are always a good indicator, you know, we'll see through the boxes. We wear them out, we don't just go get a new one because we scratch it, we wear them out in a lot of places. Or we get them out of there before they start costing us a tremendous amount of money. That's why our mechanics have been invaluable to try and diagnose what happens with these things. And they've been here so long, they know it about this age, this is going to start happening. In fact, I'm seeing the wear here, we really need to get rid of this thing. So we don't bring you things just to bring you things, they are on a rotating basis, they are in a life expectancy plan. So it comes down to really projects. That's what you decide, is what projects do you not want to do, do you want to do? And if you don't want to do any, it's a much easier year, if you want to do a bunch, it gets a little more hectic. But that's the limits, and we try to provide you all the information we can to make that decision for you. And that's why we're bringing out the big spreadsheet with the five years out of what that looks like, or the 10 years out, or the, you know, here's where we're sitting.
On equipment, has this come up in staff meetings where, are we seeing areas where the supply chain is just so bungled that we can't, you know, it just isn't wise to purchase, or we can't purchase, or we're purchasing?
Yeah, we have trucks right now, we can't get them anymore, they're gone, and the 22s, who knows when they'll be in, so we have had to pull back some. I think we had one last one, we got through, where we got two bids on it, and we were lucky to get that. And one of the bids was, I'm not sure if I can really get it, but I'm going to bid it. So that didn't help a whole lot, but we got one, is what we could get.
Next month, I don't know, month before, but it could be five months after the delivery.
It's tough, so everything's that way, I don't know about the specialty stuff, you know, garbage trucks, the big stuff, everyone followed a lot of that.
You're going to submit your budget amendment as well, there's a lot of things from last year that we did not receive in time, so I'm going to come back to you in the budget amendment because we got it later than we were supposed to. to back to the budget amendment because we got it later than we were supposed to.
Yeah. Didn't we spec out a 2023 unit not that long ago?
Could be. We're not going to go that far out.
Was that the last year? No. That was, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, the big custom stuff is still hand-built, probably is still more on task. It's the ones you want to turn around the factories, there's not getting them.
And I don't know if that's a normal timeline for that piece of equipment to be that far out or not, but, but anyway.
So, yeah, we're looking out as soon as we can, and we'll try and go even this year, and depending on the budgets, how they go, if things look like they're done roughly in February, March, we'll start actually looking to get plans together to kickstart July to have it coming, so it could take eight months to get it, or 10 months to get it, and try and keep it in the fiscal year, or those two. But it's been a challenge. So if there's money remaining, we put it in the reserves, and then when the reserves get to a certain level, we bring those back down, and we use them for one-time projects, so we don't have to re-tax again for a lot of that. So that's where the savings go, is to apply to another project to not tax for the next year. And that's kind of how we've done it. Every year, we take a hard look at the reserves, here's where we ought to be by policy, let's get it back down to here, and this allows us to use it for projects or equipment that we don't have to tax for going forward, so.
Something that strikes me, you know, I think we've all heard plenty of times, people make a reference to, I have to balance my home budget, or I have to balance my small business budget, which is a valid point. But when we're making choices whether to put a fence around our yard or not, or if we're making choices whether to build up the inventory in our business or not, those are things that we have choices about. And, and what I'm hearing from this discussion is, other than the big projects, like you said, we really don't have choices for much of anything, and there's an awful lot that's out of control, and that's without a flood, or a recession, or a pandemic. And I, I just think that we need to be careful about trying to think that we can manage this, just like a household budget.
Yeah, we're not a business, we're not a corporation, you hear that all the time as well, we're not for profit, we don't have that, we're, we're different. Government has always been the thing that picks up private businesses when it fails. So if you keep safe, when things don't go further, government will be there to pick it up. That was the old school of thinking, some still think that, I'm not sure if I believe it or not. I think we just provide what we can, the best way we can with what we have. You know, you look at the calls to, you know, we should cut the budget, cut taxes, and that sounds great, and it's a great cliche line you can use when you're running on things. We can do that tomorrow, we can cut the budget and cut it to shreds. I mean, it's so simple, I mean, it's easy math, you teach your kids to do it. Knowing where to stop, and what happens if you don't, is the tricky part of it, and that's what we're here for, is to explain you what's going to happen if you do that. I can tell you five years from now what happens if you do this, I've seen it already. That's the hard part about this. It's easy to cut back taxes, but if you're going to make an impact, it comes down to bodies, it comes down to personnel. As you said, the budgets, year to year, the inventories of things, that's flat pretty much, and it's by design, we put that in the request, it's going to stay flat. If it doesn't, I want to know why. Equipment, projects. So a big impact, year to year, it's bodies, which then becomes services, which then becomes, how far do you want to go? So it's not difficult, it's just decisions. We can chop it all day long, cut taxes every single year. Eventually, you don't have anything left, but you can certainly do it. I know it sounds good, but there are ripple effects to that, and implications that occur. And so let's, I just remind people when we're talking about that, think ahead, what would that look like?
So James, I have to admit that a couple days ago, I was looking through past budgets and our tax rate. And it looks like for a long time, our tax rate was pretty stable, right around 14%. And then it seemed like in the last two budgets, it's gone up.
Yep.
Is that in a response to the rollback, or what?
It's project work.
So it's project work. So the, the reason that the tax rates have gone up in the last two years has been pretty much the Parkway and some of those big projects.
Parkway did not increase taxes at all. Parkway was a lot of sales tax and road use, or lost in tip.
So would you say that was the drive?
After that, that's when it started to get projects. It was Forest Street, it was everything we just talked about, I mean, it was Forest Street, it was Bremer Avenue, the first one was a water bond off the books, second one was DOT payment, that was part of that tax. It's Cedar Lane, it's, it's all the road work, it's the projects. That's what has increased the tax.
So the, the reason that taxes have gone up in the last two years is primarily road work, road reconstruction?
Project work.
Okay.
So if you look at it, you know, when you break down the taxes, you have an 810 levy, so no matter what you spend, you have $8.10 per thousand. You got to fit everything in there that you can. Then you have a spot for benefits, compensation, whether it be police, whether it be Ipers, whatever it is, you have that spot, so you can tax for that. You have a small, tiny little tax, it's 13 and a half cents, I think, for the Civic Center. Why in the world that exists, I don't know, but they have one. We don't use the 27 cent emergency management tax, some do, some don't. Some use the capital improvement tax, we don't. Some use capital improvement funds, they tax for that, they bond for that. Everybody does it different. Our thing that moves is debt, and the debt levy, and that's what moves. That's what raises your taxes up, down, et cetera. That and the rollback and, and everything else, you know. When the state does rollbacks and they make that decision, it takes a tremendous amount to undo that. So if the rollback goes up, people are going to pay higher taxes, there's nothing you can do, the, the cuts are drastic, you can get that one year, get away from that. When they lower it, you'll see some, you know, rates possibly go down, I mean, it all depends. But again, the taxation that we get and the hits we take from the state affect us far more than people realize, because it allows an entire class to go up or down, and 70-some percent of our budget is made up of residential. So that rollback on residential, as it fluctuates, hits us harder than a lot of places, whereas commercial and industrial, it just stays at 90% the whole time. And if you were, had a lot of ag, like the county does, that's affected by ag. It wasn't that many years ago, it was 40-some percent, now it's 84%. It's all over the board, ag is, and that's tied linked to residential. They can only shift either way, 3% now. The state tax code's a mess, it really is.
We've got, we've got a significant amount of debt rolling off here, is it a couple years of 2024 budget where we open up some capacity? Is it even?
Yeah, 10% every year, everything's on 10%.
We know a bit larger of a drop coming in.
Like I said, you'll be down to 64%, and you were almost 80% a year ago, you'll be down to 64% at the end of this fiscal year, June of 2022, if you don't issue debt.
Will Champions Ridge go away completely once that sells?
What's that?
Will Champions Ridge, that 400,000 you talked about for Champions Ridge, will that go away completely when that sells?
Yeah, well, I mean, that is going to go to the vault, that is already scheduled to be done there, but it comes off in a couple years. Mike said every, every year is 10% rolling off, and it's substantial. So it's more than what we've been putting on for the last how many years, but every time it go up, it's, you know, quarter on the right for a million dollars you borrow, roughly. So if you borrow $4 million, it raises a levy a dollar. That's kind of the guide we go off of, and it's pretty true right now. So when you borrow five, six million dollars for Forest Street, that's a dollar fifty on the levy, that's what happened, it went from 14 to 15 something, to 16 something. It's a lot of borrowing.
Thank you.
But that's what gets the projects done unless you want to tax for them. So that's what I got, that's a brief segment.
With that, I would encourage anybody for future education for extra credit, visit with James.
That's the frustration, to hear all this stuff come up, and not a single person's ever come and asked us how it works or anything. I've never had an appointment, anybody in my time here to actually come and understand and talk about the budget. But yet, there's all this stuff that gets put out there, and it's like, I just wish you'd come in and get educated, how it works, so we don't have to do this again. I mean, it's, it's unfortunate, it's just misinformation, accidental, intentional, it doesn't matter, it's all still misinformation. It could be avoided if they just would come in and actually ask a question and talk to us.
Well, I just appreciate all the effort you put into teaching us, because it is complicated, and, I mean, it's an ever, it's an eternal learning process, but I appreciate the time you and this guy.
I'll code three to four, and you'll read the chapter, it's nasty, but you can read it.
All right, that City Finance 101 is dismissed. We'll move on to Section H, Staff Updates. Mr. Bronner, Mr. Thor.
I think he's got a brief one, Garrett does?
Just a couple of quick ones. Joel actually touched on it a little bit during the presentation. We had a very good turnout at the Cedar River Park Open House and tours on Saturday. There was probably about 100 people that came out, judging by how many Jimmy John sandwiches were left. So, yeah, about 100 people came out. As Joel mentioned, there was a nice game going out on the Miracle Link Field, it was very fun to sit and watch and to talk to everyone who came out. Thank you to the council members who came out, task force members, and then also some of the commission members as well. So, yeah, thank you for that. Then the other thing to mention is just the Candlelight Walk, Saturday, November 6th, from 5:00 till 7:00 PM. It'll be taken off on the rail trail right behind Quick Star East. So walk out about a mile, hang out at the bonfire for a little bit, and grab some hot chocolate. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. I apologize for not making it, it's a Pulp City family event, but I appreciate the effort that was put in behind the tours. Only question I had, if I may, for city staff was a request for an update on Cedar Lane progress and timeline of completion, if we have any rough idea. I know we were delayed.
Next couple of weeks, you think, Mike, or how close are we?
Well, let me touch upon a couple. The North Ridge Drive is now open. That occurred Friday, and they've just got to pick up the traffic controls, so if you see a road closed ahead sign, that's misinformation, sorry about that. Cedar Lane, contractors back today. Hopefully by the end of the week, we'll have it open to the public. Three items will probably remain, but I want to get the roadway open while those items occur. The final seeding and restoration may take place under traffic. We will have the asphalt contractor come in when the weather conditions are suitable for doing that. Aspro out Waterloo is going to be performing the work, and their facility's open until Thanksgiving, so it is actually somewhat helpful to get some traffic on, on the gravel before they come back in, pour it up with asphalt. And then the other item is there's some chain link fencing that's supposed to go up around the ends of these box culverts, and we're contractors struggling with material supplies, or the subcontractor is. And so again, we may look at cleaning up some temporary, just some orange tape defense in an effort to be able to get the roadway again, opened up again. First Street Northwest, there are some punch list items that need to be taken care of, so you may see the contractor come back in, kind of like, well, what are they doing? They might be popping some manholes, doing some things there. There's a couple of head ramps that do not pass DOT inspection, and so they're going to have to pop out the detectable warning, where the detectable warnings are, and replace them. So that's, that's what's happening, it's just addressing some punch list items on First Street Northwest, and that should, you know, take place here in the next week or two.
Excellent, thank you very much. Nothing really? Okay, we'll start right there with Mr. Bergen.
Let's see. I did want to point out that if you have not been following the Wortburg Women's Volleyball Team, you should be. They are currently ranked fifth in the nation, they are undefeated at 22 and 0. They've got one more game left in the regular season before conference begin, before conference playoffs begins. But now would be a good time to be hopping on that bandwagon, because it's pretty exciting watching them play, so now it's time to pay attention. I'm going to trust that someone else will be talking about trick-or-treating, so I'm not going to spend too much time talking about that. I just want to invite anyone who wants to talk about city business, I will be at the Wooden Foot afterwards, come and join me for a beer.
Ms. Wolfert?
Well, there's going to be downtown trick-or-treating on the 28th, so bring the kids down.
Perfect. Ms. Robin?
I just wanted to make an announcement about an event that the WSR High School Robotics Team is sponsoring. They're sponsoring a City Cleanup Day on November 7th. There's information that you can get by emailing the group, but basically, if you or your family or friends want to help, you can show up at Coleman Park between 8:00 AM and 1:00 PM. They will give you trash bags, tell you an area of the city that you can go clean up, and then you, they'll be, they'll have gloves too, but that's just a, they do a lot of community service as part of their team efforts, and so it'd be great if we could support them.
Thank you. Ms. Byers?
Yes, indeed, come downtown for trick-or-treating on Thursday evening from 6:00 to 7:30. And it's kind of getting to be the time for organizations and groups to think about sponsoring a Christmas greetings on main window, and contact the chamber if you have a group, or if you have a window that you want to be used.
Thank you. Ms. Schneider? Mr. Nekka?
Well, I just want to have a shout-out here to the Cedar River Park Task Force people, and Leisure Services people, and anybody else who was involved in the Cedar River Park out there. I was there Saturday morning, spent quite a bit of time, a lot more time out there than I intended to. That is just a wonderful facility, and I would venture to say one of the best facilities in the state for something like that. I've seen quite a few, and, and this is just superior. And when you add to that one of the best soccer facilities in the state, right across the street, I think that that puts Waverly in a category that, that no one else can match. And I'm very proud of going down there, what we've been able to accomplish. So thank you for all, to all those people who've worked so hard, I know they're not finished yet, but all those people that worked so hard for the last several years in making this thing happen.
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
Yeah, so I'd just like to shout out a lot of students on Homecoming Committee at Wortburg. It was a really special weekend, a few weekends ago before break, and I think it was an awesome moment for Waverly as a whole. And then I'd like to shout out my exec team, because we did outfly right before break, so that finally happened, and it was a really great moment for the Wortburg community. Besides that, I'm always grateful for sitting in and listening on these discussions as this type of work, as it's, a lot of it is behind the scenes, it's very important, and I'm very grateful for it, to see it at this level, so thank you.
Thank you. You've witnessed the sausage being made, as Rob would say. Mr. Kangas?
The only thing I've got is that, remember that there is early voting available at the courthouse, now through Friday, and then again Monday, and then, of course, next Tuesday